This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to the regular April 21, 2025 council meeting. I'll call it to order at 6:30 PM. All rise for the pleasurable agents if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. I'm all right.
All right.
I can get back again.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, or anyone like to make a motion, accept the agenda for this evening. So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Webb, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving right into the mayor's report. Councilor Webb has the honor of recognizing a citizen of the month of April. This thinks so. Turn over to Councilor Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have our continuing saga here of recognizing citizens that are going up and above and beyond, donating a lot of their own time, effort to our community, the citizens. And we keep ferreting them out, finding them. Actually, this one, my list candidate was recommended to me from a person and I was like, yes, very well deserved. This person, I read Scott's article to get some of this, so it might not be totally correct. But it didn't quite say when you moved here for sure, but Jack and his wife moved here in 2018 or thereabouts. And of course, we all know we had Jack Hobo Bakery. And it was interesting to me that it was actually the Lions that gave him the name Hobo Jack. And I didn't know that, so. So Jack became the cook at the Senior Center that I believe the mayor is frothing, which is good move, Mr. Mayor. And during the interview process, they talked about how, was it Kilgore?
Yes.
That she had put on a Christmas dinner and that they'd like to, that was just something they didn't like to see again. So we all are aware, most of us were down there this year and put on the Christmas dinner. I helped, wife and I helped serve.
Oh, you were sick.
I was sick. My wife was there.
And, but your wife was there. Anyhow, it was, it was quite the event and they had two shifts because of how many people that they could accommodate. And I talked to Jack about what it took to put that on. And of course, there's a lot of donations that helped with that dinner. The Lions were a big part of it, I think, helping supply. But Jack cooked 10 turkeys, two hams. Man, you were kind of light on hams, weren't you?
Really, yeah.
50 pounds of yams. Yeah, 50 pounds of yams, 12 each of pumpkin pies and boysenberry, and then some more on top of that. 30 pounds of Brussels sprouts. I remember seeing those going down the line. Didn't say how many pounds of scalloped potatoes. That was the one I was serving and man, I was hard dishing that out and not wanting to take a bite. So, and lots more. So I asked, you know, Jack, you know, what kind of hours was involved in doing this? You know, outside of his normal scope duties of serving the seniors, their normal meal. And he said, there was probably 20 hours of just rounding up between the donations and the supplies, running around, getting everything together. And he figured he spent close to 40 hours cooking all this food. So, so my citizen of the month, I'll probably butcher your last name, Jack Capilla?
Capilla.
A Capilla? Recognizing Jack for citizen of the month.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, put fruit, crock and sip.
Ready, one, two, three. I'll do one more and one more.
Oh.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jack and Mary, his wife. Thanks for all you do down there at the center. I knew you'd be a really wonderful asset, not only to the Senior Center and Food Bank, but the whole Verona community. So, thanks again.
Thanks for calling me, you know, partner, really. And you were the first, first not to us.
So, yep. Okay, moving on. We do have a presentation tonight. We have Sheriff Brian Fishley.
Hi, sorry.
And so, welcome, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Yeah, 15 minutes for your presentation and.
Sure, I will probably, I have something small to say. And I'm welcome to answer any questions you guys might have. So thanks for letting me be here tonight. Today, we're gathered about to talk about something that not only affects just a few of us, but our entire community, safety, security, and how we support our local justice system. As you may know, we're asking voters to renew the existing jail levy, the same rate, 58 cents per $1,000. Now, I understand the natural reaction in tax measures because many of us are already balancing tight budgets. But this is simply a continuation of the current levy that will allow us to keep the jail open and continue to hold offenders accountable. This really is about investing in the safety and future of our communities. Our jail is more than just a holding facility. It's part of a system that deals with growing challenges, including mental health crisis and substance abuse issues with off the line people in jail. With this levy, we can continue to provide resources for rehabilitation programs, mental health care, and substance abuse counseling. This can help turn people, this can help people turn their lives around and help reduce repeat offenses. When fewer people end up back in jail, it creates a safer, more stable community for all of us. So let's talk about what this jail levy actually means in practical terms. The measure will not increase your taxes at all. The extra money needed to make ends meet in the jail will be raised through renting additional beds to the U.S. Marshal Service. Keep our jail open means safer streets and a justice system that works better for everyone. Finally, this levy is not just about keeping people in jail. It's about building a community where crime is less likely to happen in the first place. Investing in rehabilitation, mental health services, and crime prevention will reduce the burden on law enforcement and help keep our neighborhoods safe. When we invest in infrastructure and services that make our communities safer, we all benefit. We see fewer crimes, fewer victims, and fewer families torn apart. The jail levy is renewed, the jail levy renewal is an opportunity to do just that. So when you see Measure 5304 on your ballot, I urge it up, just think about the dollar amount, but about the broader picture. This is about creating a safer, stronger, and more compassionate community where we all can thrive. I hope the city of Verona will consider to vote yes in endorsing this levy in May. Thank you for your time, for your commitment to the future of our community. So that's all I really have to say. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Does the council have any questions here?
So, give us kind of a brief rundown on available beds. I know before, the previous levy, we were talking if it didn't pass that extra, then we're going to have to cut back beds.
Yeah, so let me kind of get into funding real quick. So our jail is really funded on three different sources of funding. So think about it like a stool, right? We get a million dollars from the general fund every year. We, our other leg is for, is through the tax levy. We usually get about 3.8, 3.9 million for that this year. But our third leg is our U.S. commercial benefits. This year, we're going to be about 4.2 million, something like that. So if we lose one of those funding strengths, it's really kind of difficult to keep the jail open, especially at its current capacity. I know last time, I believe Commissioner Garrett was here talking to you guys about the levy renewal, and we were actually asking for a slight increase at that point. But I heard the tax payers loud and clear. And so I've charted my pencil and figured out how many U.S. commercials we have to bring in to kind of fill in those funding gaps. And so if we were able to bring in 125 U.S. marshal inmates, that would help bridge that funding gap between the levy, what we make in the levy and what we need to actually operate. And what that would do is that would allow us to keep all of our local inmates. At any time, our local inmate population is about 70-ish, 65 to 70. We currently have a U.S. marshal population, I think, of about 108. I really want to kind of keep the jail capacity to around 185 because anything above that really depends on safety risk for the inmates and my staff.
So this is going to maintain that level?
Yes, sir.
Of support?
Yes, sir. If the levy fails for whatever reason, then we might, we seriously have to look at, that will be a 3.91 budget gap. The commissioners have already told us that is not in the budget for them to help out beyond the $1 million. So we really will have to look at what this means for the jail and what's likely going to be the closest.
Anybody else?
Just to confirm, this is not an increase nor a decrease, it is just maintaining the levy amount as it exists today?
Correct, the same levy amount that was initially passed, I believe, 2014.
And that's 57 cents?
57, 97 cents, which rounded up to 58.
58 per thousand.
I think the exact amount is 57, 97 per thousand. Must keep us going for at least till four years.
Okay, if there's no, go ahead, Dale.
The county hasn't taken any action to reduce the amount of bids?
So I have worked with the county commissioners to kind of put a system in place that if the levy is not passed, we can start reducing our population immediately.
This isn't passed?
This is not passed, yeah. Hopefully, upon passage of the levy, I'm going to go back to the commissioner with a revised plan, if you will, that will essentially eliminate the need to really matrix any B flat. So, yes, sir.
What's the major cost in the jail? What is the most?
The biggest cost for us is personnel, as it is with any business. But the other issues that we run into is pre-COVID, post-COVID, just like everyone else. So pre-COVID, our medical contract, for instance, was, I believe, about $650,000, $670,000. That was in 2020, 2021. 2022, 2023, that increased to 1.5 million for the same services. Our food services contract went up about 45% in the same time period.
So you also mentioned rehabilitation. What, what kind of cost is involved with that?
So the good thing is, so anytime we sell the inmates commissary or they buy some sort of service from the jail, a portion of that funds goes into what's called the inmate benefit account. That is money that is there that we can use on any program that's not brick and mortar and is not personnel related to use that account to pay for those services. So any sort of like rehabilitation services, those provides direct service to the inmates who can use that inmate benefit account and not charge our citizens anything.
And that's an outside source then?
It's inside, so it's like a savings method. So inmates buy a candy bar for say a buck, right? 25 cents of that dollar will go into this account. It has been since the jail was open in 2001. So we kind of get creative a little bit sometimes with how we, how we spend that money. But we really want to try to offset the cost to our citizens.
Dale.
So I know in the past, well, that was probably COVID driven, but are we, where are we at right now for some times when cities need to bring somebody in? And in the past, we've been told no because of capacity or it was the COVID rule that. Where are we at today as far as serving the communities, bringing in prisoners?
So we have, we have never, since the passage of the levy, we have never really matrixed anyone. We have never released anyone without a court order, end of sentence, bail, that sort of thing. During COVID, we did ask agencies to restrict booking because we're trying to maintain the health and safety of my staff and inmates and return yet. But since COVID passed, I think it was 23-ish, 24-ish, we went back to business as normal. We don't, we don't turn anyone away without, unless it's like a medical reason, like they blow over our blood alcohol content or something like that.
So passing this levy will maintain that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff Fishley. And we'll have some questions answered and we're grateful for that, so.
Appreciate the opportunity to come talk.
And I might add, if anyone wants to comment, they could, they could comment in the audience participation segment of our meeting. So thank you for being here tonight.
I appreciate you guys, folks. Thank you guys very much.
Any council committee meeting reports?
No.
Okay. Consent agenda for acceptance, consent agenda for approval. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Susan.
Topics on the floor.
Receive any?
No.
You had offered the audience the time.
I'm sorry.
You offered the other, at what point?
During the.
Right now.
Now, yep.
If you wouldn't mind when you're done, before you leave for the night, will you still?
Yeah. Yeah, three minutes.
Starting two minutes ago.
Can I hold you to two and a half?
Steve Weller, 1264 Union Street. I have a question in regards to the sheriff's levy. And it has to do with the fact of how they're funded. And if you take and do some simple math equations, you can come up with a whole lot more than $4 million than he comes up with. You can come up with about $7 million. And so my question is, is where's all this other money supposed to go into? And then if you look back into 2023, the sheriff's office actually asked us to pass a Measure 5-290, which was a special district election for a four-year local option levy dedicated to law enforcement. That was supposed to have generated an excess amount of money of about, if I'm not mistaken, let me look at my minutes here, two would be raised was 1.868330 in 2023, a million and a half plus dollars. So my question is, where is all these funding resources disappearing to and why are we now asked to maintain another levy when there's been a lot of money put into that, that budget? And I do question some other documents that I have here that was before the County Board of Commissioners. And there's been a lot of things passed by the County Board of Commissioners. And it's an order number 5-2025. And I would encourage you that if you haven't read that, to take the time to read it. It was dated on the 19th of February of this year. And there's a lot of information that to me seems to be missing. There's some holes in the target. I think we saw that when Commissioner Garrett was here as well. There was some questions asked and they weren't able to be answered. So for me, as a taxpayer who's lived in this side of the county for 66 years, I'm concerned about the kind of resources we receive when we're over here. Most all of you know, I served as a former fire chief and I can remember times when we would struggle to get enforcement assistance when we needed them. And so as a general statement, I'm not in favor of the levy, even though it looks good and sounds good in a lot of ways. There are still some questions I have in regards to some of these. So that's my direction for the, as a citizen of Verona.
Steve, one question. What was that document you have?
Which document? I have Measure 5-290, which was dated and assigned in 3/7 of 2023. The other document was assigned this year on the 19th of February, and that order number is 5-2025. And that was before the Board of Commissioners for Columbia County. Just some information I think to use the council should really look at closely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. No other participants? Okay. Consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes from March 31, 2025. City council meeting minutes for April 7, 2025.
I move to approve the consent agenda for approval.
Moved by Councilor Wagner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Weller.
Two seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. None opposed, motion carried. Moving into unfinished business, Open Air Market request, page four and five.
We have Leanne Russell here to answer any questions you have.
Yes.
Aye.
Or did they just?
Any questions or discussion on this?
In a minute, it shows the questions that we had.
Right.
This meeting there, so. Page two.
Not everyone has the minutes, maybe ask them. Ask the question if everyone doesn't have the minutes.
Yeah, that first one, current vendors paid today.
Um, let's see. Okay, so those are the two questions that I can answer. One of them was how much has, you were gone?
Yeah.
I thought, I'm sorry. Let me try to settle those.
Go for it.
And as, so from July 1st to April 14th, when I requested this information from Angie, there, we had gained, made $945 under space at that site. The other current, the current vendor who's there most of the time has a past due balance as of today's date of 235. Those were the only questions for staff. The rest, I believe, was for.
Can I get clarification on the past due? This is going to sound maybe dumb. Are they aware of the fact that they're past due and how much? Just, just double check.
I don't believe they probably have the balance as of today's date, but they knew that they were past due.
They knew with the balance from the last time they made payments?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Without trying to get into too many.
Yeah.
Specific details.
Thank you.
So it appears to me from the last meeting and the discussion and, you know, this is pretty much still facing us, is we've got two different entities now, nonprofit and profit and people for profit. And so it's, it makes it more, a lot more complex. And so I think that kind of the discussion should be centered around that and what, how does the city look at that activity in relation to, you know, fairness to everyone involved and, and, you know, people not upholding their, their promise, if you will. So, you know, that's why we are back hit here this meeting with some questions and thank you for being here. So.
Just to note a little bit of separation, she does not own the vendor that we were specifically talking about. She is representative for Open Air Market.
Okay.
Just to note the separation. So.
Go ahead, Dale.
So I would entertain having her, Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
To kind of give us a brief how this is going to operate.
Yes, exactly. Kind of took it over from Brett when Brett had it. I would like to open it up a little bit more. When it was, it was only on Saturdays from 10 to 2. And when I was down there doing that, during that, we had a lot of requests for people to stay a little bit later with working individuals not being able to attend or even be a part of, be a participant of the Open Air Market. I would like to see it be open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and open from 10 to 6. And Brett was charging $5 per day for that. And I think that went to him for his work and being there and, and the extra.
Advertising.
Promotion and advertising, exactly. And I don't, I would be happy to forward that on to the city. I don't see that that would be an issue for me because I would be down there as a vendor anyway. So I would be happy to do that. I do have a guidelines in the application that I copied off with what Brett had before. The only differences are dates are changed. And on these, it states that they are not allowed, any vendors are not allowed down there while city has scheduled events such as 4th of July, things like that. So there are rules or regulations of what they could sell and, you know, they have to be licensed and prove that with the city. Have to follow the state regulations for that.
I just have a couple of questions. So have the, have the main vendors for Open Air Market committed to that they would be able or have the capacity to do the three days? Because I know that sometimes what happens is if you don't have enough people, some poor vendor sits out there with their jam by themselves and then it doesn't really draw the same. So is it like the vendors are wanting or are we wanting to try this idea for the three day run? Like, how do we get there, I guess is my question?
Exactly, I understand that. There has been a request, but not a lot.
Okay.
Okay, not a lot of them. I am willing to do it, to try be there and see how it goes.
Yeah.
But if it doesn't, I agree with you. You know, we don't want one vendor out there, you know, selling their wares. All by themselves, exactly. So I guess to answer your question, it would be both. We've tried out, if it doesn't work, then.
Okay. The application says Friday and Saturdays, but then you also said Sunday.
Option, I'll be an option with this approval.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I have one more question. So the city does run when food trucks come from out of town. Is there a problem with the for-profit vendors that are food trucks basically? Because that's the two that have been down there outside of Open Air Market. This kind of incorporates them into Open Air Market. And so that kind of doesn't recoup the funds the city has been getting? And then how does, so say Chop PDX, because they've come out here a few times, or the Oli Bolli Mexican Bowls comes out sometimes. I'm trying to logistically figure out if Open Air Market, people kind of find a spot and get married to it? And then what happens when there, those other entities that have come to what used to be the food cart court, is that what that property kind of became when the city got it as a buyout? How do we work them in with the same kind of regularity and opportunity that they've had up to this point? That'd be a little bit of my concern in mixing, or maybe we cordon off a certain section that is for. That'd be a little bit of my concern in mixing or maybe we cordon off a certain section that is for those ones. I don't know. That's just kind of a concern that comes up. Because a lot of times we don't know, sorry to interrupt, Leanne. A lot of times we don't know until like really close to the dates that they're coming cause their schedule, they're, you know, they didn't do so good in Hillsborough and they're gonna pop out here that weekend. So they let us know like in late timing. So I don't know how to figure out logistically that we keep offering that to them, but then, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's my.
Can I address that?
Yeah.
I obviously, I think that your vendors, your food vendors have first priority. That should be established with the open air market, you know, vendors.
Okay.
To the, um, those, you have first priority. There is the concrete slab that's that closer towards the river.
Mm-hmm.
That, um, it's a little tight for food vendors to be in there.
Yeah.
So it kind of mentally kind of established that's where they would go. And that's where the open air market would start first.
Okay.
And then they would extend out maybe onto the lawn, but the other areas were all like.
Parking.
Food vendors are, that's theirs.
Okay, that would just stay open for the.
Absolutely.
So then the tricky part is, is if like an out of towner comes and pays the city, but then an in toowner comes and pays $5 or an already known vendor from town would come in and pay $5. It seems like maybe the.
It's discriminatory.
A little bit.
Yeah.
Who regulates all that?
Well, the city's always had a $10 a day transient vendor for food trucks when they come.
Is there enough room down there? I mean, it sounds like.
We've had three at one time for food trucks and the slab that Leanne's speaking about has kind of a curb around it. It's the old foundation of the health center. And so food trucks don't go back into that very often. They wanna pull up where they can kind of make their presentation to the public. The public has easy access in and out, so they're either up against the old brewer lot there or they're up against the fence here and then cars can park at the normal parking spots. Is how, how has been working.
I would like to address that. I am so open with raising that to $10 too for the vendors. That's very, very, very reasonable with them coming and selling for that week, you know.
Yeah.
Too, that's very, very reasonable. So I'm very open to, you know, making those changes.
Well, it seems like to me, we also need to answer the question of, is Friday, Saturday, Sunday? As opposed to it's just been Saturday, right?
Yeah, the food trucks are Friday and Saturdays, the days they usually come into town, but open air was just Saturday in, in the past.
Susan.
Yep, so the original application is the Friday, Saturday and then potentially Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I like that. Question though, if you have vendors who aren't able to do Fridays, are you gonna allow them to do Saturday or Saturday slash Sunday only?
They still, it's, it's still straight across.
Okay.
It's just still straight across. I think it was very, very reasonable. Actually probably way under, but yeah, it doesn't matter whether you're there just one day or you're there the three.
So does someone wanna ask these questions?
Yeah, I was getting them.
Yeah, good.
Thank you. So one of our questions was, will booths remain onsite overnight?
No. Absolutely not, they have to, it was scheduled till 6. No one can be still there by Saturday, they have to be out of there.
How did it work on when you just had it on Saturdays?
Um, you know, it, it worked, but the people wanted more. But I'll be honest with you, I've had a real struggle getting anybody to make that commitment this year to even be down there. So honestly, I'm not sure. It's, I'm, I'm second guessing it, you know? But I put out the advertisement on the open air market, advertising it and wanted to, your feedback, you know, their feedback on what is, many of them said in one of Friday, Saturday, Sunday. You know, at longer hours, but nobody's committing. So if you would rather just start out just Saturdays like it was before and only going 10 to 2, I'm very willing to do that too.
All right. Um, if approved, what is the benefit to the city? That was, I'm not sure whose question that was, but that was as it related to prior being a nonprofit, there was, Hans Onhardt was the recipient.
So personally, despite feelings, I think that money should come to the city of the maintenance of that site. You know, yes, those vendors are responsible for cleaning up their site, but they leave, but there's the lawn that needs to be mowed, there's, you know, the, the concrete has been swept before and, and there's picnic tables up there now. And so firstly, I think that money should come back to the city for appreciation for maintaining that lot.
Okay, the next question was partially answered, I think, but says a food vendor is not affiliated with the group set up and paid the city fee. So that would, I think you were addressing just the food trucks, but random person decides they wanna show up on Saturday and set up, I think is what the question was. I didn't write it, or I didn't ask it, so I'm not clear.
It was in regards to, you addressed it, people from out of town, if they didn't know about it and coming and setting up, then who would they pay? Do they pay the city or the open air market? But it sounds like it was mostly answered.
Before it was always only open to, or no, yes. For residents.
For food trucks?
No.
Or open air?
For the open air.
Yeah, and open air, in the past, the vendors participating in open air market kind of, then open air market during salmon festival would move in the park so that those local vendors got into the city festival at a cheaper rate for participating and selling their wares and giving benefits to the community through the summer. So I think that would still stand, any of them, I think salmon festival still wants to see the locals come in and fill the space of Hawkins Park with their wares tail.
Uh, and the last question on the list was, is this a nonprofit or for-profit organization running it?
I think she is.
Yeah. I guess it's a nonprofit.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
She, she's not.
If she passes it through.
Yeah, it's just gonna be a.
Okay. So you're volunteering on behalf of the city to?
Correct, correct, yes.
I, I do have, and I know it's a small amount of money, but with the current state of the world, I have a little bit of worry that somebody that is for-profit, like an out of town food truck and then somebody that's making home-based jam have the same price. That to me, it seems maybe not apples to apples, right? Someone selling their product for $10, $12 a plate and someone selling a $6 jar of jam, they're, oh, just the, I don't know. I don't know, because they're not gonna take up the same space. They're not gonna have the same taxing on the property, you know, foot traffic versus vehicles. You know what I'm saying? I don't know.
I would think if you wanna reduce the cost, it would have to be across the board, otherwise it's discriminatory.
Well, I think you could do it in like mostly open air market or 10 by 10 pop-up space. Maybe you do it by the space they acquire in the site, right? Because a food truck's three or four pop-ups long. So maybe you keep them at, I don't know. To me, it would seem like depending on, any festival you go to, depending on size, you're gonna pay for more, right? The food vendors at salmon festival, they take up 30 by 10 versus someone with a card table and a 10 by 10 pop-up, they don't pay the same price. So. I don't know.
Which means we'd have to set up a policy.
Well, you just have to add in the, the smaller size with a price. You already have the transient vendor for food trucks as a category. If that makes sense.
So would we be then managing this? Is that what we're saying, we're gonna take it over?
No, I'm just asking the question, cause I think if she's already having troubles, people committing, the increase in price might deter some, is what I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud.
So we should just have rates based on nonprofit?
Or do we?
For-profit small and for-profit big spaces, correct?
Well, we keep it how it is. And we let open air do their vendors their longer hours and food trucks still check in with the city. And then if she wants to use the money for advertising that she's getting for vendors, I get that, cause they had to, they periodically have to buy a $150 banner to hang up cause that one's probably toast by now, you know? So there's gonna be costs. I'm, I don't ever think someone got rich off of the $5 vendor fee for the homemakers. That doesn't worry me at all, but I think maybe just for the streamlining of it, they can all be there during the same, whatever hours you guys approve, but we just keep the for-profit still going because the only other thing that, and I'm deadly do right, that worries me a little bit is by checking in with those food trucks, they have to have the health department thing, they have to have all these things. And if we put all the onerous on Mrs. Russell, what if somebody comes in and they don't have that? How, what like leverage does she have to be like, you can't be here, right? I mean, it's kind of weird to put her in that position.
So anybody who's selling food, food ready to eat would have to be arranged.
Yeah, how they already are, yeah.
I would personally like to see it that the open air market has, is its entity all on its own. It's not associated with the food vendors.
Yeah, yeah.
That it's a shared, it's an entity, has nothing to do with them.
Because then you're also, cause I guarantee you, if they go into salmon festival or jamboree, salmon festival or jamboree is gonna have a food vendor price way different than the deal homemaker vendors get in, right? I mean, they're, they're feeling like too different. But I don't think there's any issue with the lengthening the hours to try and get more customers to be able to go. That all doesn't seem.
That's what I thought. Leanne, um, if you wanted to just try it on Saturday instead of, like Jack, instead of tend to do it like you, like you applied for from, from eight to six or nine to six, I think, nine to six.
Certainly.
Would you like to try that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think that would be, and just try it?
Okay. And then if it, if I get more interest or people want more, then I would just.
You just come back to amend this application, say we've got enough interest that now people wanna do it Sundays too or something.
Certainly, I'd be great.
Then it doesn't hold you to trying to stalk all the hours, you kind of can build, you know?
Correct, thank you, I, yes, I would be very open to that.
And you could keep separate from the food trucks.
Well, food vendors.
Food vendors.
Have like a booth.
Food. Yeah.
Right. Food vendors are separate into the city, everybody else is selling nicks, whatnots and.
Yeah, and food doesn't mean like preserves, it means ready to eat, like Stephanie was saying.
Sure.
Doesn't mean canned goods or things like that.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank you for taking this on. It is daunting, I've done stuff like this before. It's a lot of work.
Yes, it is.
Congratulations for being brave. So thank you for, and thank you for bringing it back and, and thinking about these things because I know for me, it's like, oh darn it, that's just not, I can't make it by two. And then where I drive by and say, ah, darn it, they're packing up, so.
So what are, what, to clarify on the application and what you guys are going to approve, you're going to approve?
Saturday only?
Starting Saturdays, nine to six.
Correct.
Nine to six, perfect. And the amount, are we changing that? Are we gonna stick with the $5?
I think so, especially if you're struggling to get people, let's not turn them off right at the get-go. Let's let them get some success before you.
See how it goes.
Okay, that sounds very agreeable.
Yes, so. Would anyone like to make a motion to amend this application? Someone we just stated?
Someone.
Go ahead. Okay, a motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Norman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Am I allowed to leave?
Sure, you don't have to hang out.
Hello, you're captain. Nice meeting you two, by the way.
Very nice, thank you. I can maneuver myself around here.
Okay, any new business tonight?
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
No new business, business from the departments, I guess, not tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
My apologies, next council meeting.
No ordinances and resolution. Correspondence staff reports, sewer loan work session. Page six. That's next Monday. 6:00 PM.
So, that will work for me.
You're gonna be gone, Dale?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll fill you in on.
I might get filled in early.
Okay. Okay, city administrator report.
Okay, so we're still waiting for the IGA for, from DEQ. DEQ's been having some troubles, they had someone hack their email and so they're kind of working on all of that. So we have not seen the IGA or the scope of work to test the well up at Odom's next to the city property that used to be the old city dump. We're required to test that for contamination so that we can get off the DEQ, basically check-in review and fee that's associated with it every year for them to, for us having an old dump there. If we can prove that it's not negatively affecting her water or if it is, use the orphan well site to get a new well, then we could reduce that. I think it's $500 a year that we have to keep with, to be on their register. ODF docs, so the cables, we have the materials, the cables at Home Depot, the staff member that was supposed to go pick it up today is sick. So we will be picking it up pretty soon, but we have the channel locks and the cable to be able to do that. And then it's just gonna take a day of no wind, absolutely glassy water and a couple of city staff along with Council Norman, Council Webb and probably Ed Toss and some other volunteers to set the anchors on those so they quit kind of shifting in the wind. Or with the teenage kids antics, both have happened. The ADA project, as you can all see, and I'm sure you've experienced here, Brown Contracting is here currently working on Grant, Washington. And, um, their goal is to get most of the Spencer Park area done because that's where most of the festivals happen. Next up will be the summer kickoff and then 4th of July. So they're really hoping to get that side dealt with so that they don't have to have the public or be in the public's way. We have our next Zoom meeting with the team tomorrow, so I didn't have any more updates because I was at a doctor's appointment at their last Zoom meeting, so I didn't get an update. Sewer springboard project, so we're gonna be holding the final public hearing for the CDBG sewer, springboard sewer project at the city council meeting on May 5th. Once the public hearing takes place, then the project can be deemed complete. We've put in for the last reimbursement, we've put in all the final draw requirements that you have to put in reporting and we've gotten ASBILs, those are getting put into GIS so that the new systems on our mapping of the utilities, so there's no downtime between that. May 28th through, or April 28th through May 2nd will be crack sealing week. May 28 through, or April 28 through May 2 will be crack sealing week. We are renting a larger machine to try and tackle the good roads with a lot of cracks. Water is the main breakdown of your road infrastructure. And so we just want to a whole week bust out as much as we can. And then that'll get us kind of in a better routine to use our smaller machine. Because this machine will just do so much more crack sealing in a quicker time. And then the senior exercise equipment and walking path are scheduled to be installed at Spencer Park the first two weeks of May. If you walk down to the kind of cluster of five trees at the end of the old log jump by the snack shack, you'll see it's spray painted. It's a six foot wide path that kind of meanders in and out of those trees. And each little bump in towards the trees is going to be a different element for senior exercise. It'll have a standard bench, a dip bench, exercise bike, all made for outdoor use and material. A glider, which is more like where you pull, push and pull. And then it'll have a big circle that's used for senior arm rotation. And it has two sizes of circles so you can practice keeping your shoulders ready to do whatever you need to do. And then we have just the upcoming meetings and the city county dinner that's going to be the 29th at the John Gumm Building. Hopefully everyone's RSVP'd if they wanted to go to that. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Dale. I assume the crack sealing is weather dependent.
It is.
They're thinking they're going to have to flex out.
Yeah.
Cross our fingers.
I know.
Just set with the, with this well up there, refresh my memory, is this well a dry well now? Or is it a possibly contaminated?
Well, so the well originally was next to where the terrorist part of the dump is. It's not super close, but it's near. It never really produced from what the owner said. And so she hooked to her dad's well system, which is back towards, you know, back down Noakes towards town. The, that's all okay right now, but they won't release, like between the parties, the property owners. But DEQ won't release us until we determine it's clean and not contaminated. It just doesn't produce or it's contaminated. And then they'll help us work with their orphan well funding stream to put in a new well closer to Noakes Road that would possibly be the producing well. So that each home, our dump isn't negatively affecting that property's value by leaving them with a well that's can't produce or is contaminated.
Got it.
I mean, we're kind of lucky in that the years that that dump was open, the chemicals available to homeowners are nothing like the chemicals now available to homeowners. So the risk associated with that dump is lesser than like, say, a dump now where you could dump a number of chemicals into the system at a dump and the dump's just going to have to deal with it.
Okay, got it.
Questions?
Okay, thank you, Jill. Items from the mayor and call service. Susan.
I will not be here for the May 5 meeting, at least not in person. I am road tripping. Probably going to be putting five, 5,000 miles. On the Lexus.
Okay.
The touring.
So you won't be here at the May 5?
May 5, definitely. Mike, depending on where we are, Mike, Mike.
Okay.
We'll see. And the 19th, we're due back on the 18th. So.
Okay.
Unless we decide to extend it from the night.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Dale, go ahead.
I see Sheriff Pixley stayed here for the end of our meeting. We, we've made pretty much a policy as council not to give endorsements on on measures. We've been through this a couple of times. For your information, we usually don't endorse anything. We let our citizens decide for themselves. Yeah.
Okay. I don't have anything. So acts and item summary. Chills out. Nothing. Heck, might as well adjourn the meeting at 7:25. Meeting adjourned.